All right, welcome. I'd like to call to order our April 23rd, 2024 meeting, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Michelle, would you do the roll, please?
Yes, Maderes.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Granland.
Here.
Who?
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Petway, here, and Superintendent Stenbik.
Here.
Thank you. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Very excited tonight, we get to start our meeting the best way, with a Highlander highlight. We have our 2023-2024 Columbia Heights High School Scholastic Art Award winners. If I could have up to the front, please, our art teachers, Sarah Honeywell, Michelle Dietz, and Isaac Glidden. Yeah. Welcome. I would love for you to introduce the awards and talk a little bit about the process and the students.
Sure, yeah, I'd love to. What you're seeing here is a culmination of the three of our groups of students, pretty much a great sampling of the whole collection of what we do, all the curriculum that we do at the high school. And the students work pretty closely with us by the time they go to submit these awards. They kind of have to choose their best works on their own, which I think is a pretty good example of learning. Yeah, and they take great pleasure in getting their accolades in a little bit different arena than the typical arena, this more soft-science way. I think it makes them really happy to be recognized for their creativity and their expression.
Excellent. Either Michelle or Isaac, did you have to say anything?
Yeah, so it was fun to work so closely with these students and see, I think I worked mainly with my advanced courses and they got, like Sarah mentioned, to select their best work, and so watching them go through the process of kind of curating their body of images, how they want to submit, how they want to write about their work, write about their intentions for an audience. The Scholastic Show is kind of a wonderful opportunity because it happened so early, so it's the first time that they get to like practice using their voice and think about how they want to present their work to this larger audience that's beyond the classroom. And so then to like have these highlights where you then get rewarded for that effort, it's just icing on the cake.
I'm just reminded, whoa, that's fairly loud, sorry. I'm just reminded of last year at the Scholastic Awards. We were, you know, we had some great winners, people winning Gold Key. And we've had some students winning Gold Key this year. And we might not have had the most winners of any school, but we definitely had the loudest support for our winners from parents and faculty and the students supporting each other, cheering on each other. It was really great to see.
And the student piece, so this takes place at the University of Minnesota, correct? At the Weisman Museum? And then the students' artwork is displayed at the Rarick Center at the University of Minnesota as well, is that correct?
Yes, and the Gold Keys are displayed there. For, I think, just a week? It's been a while since they've done it in person.
It was kind of a strange situation this year where they rolled out a new submission program and things did not go very smoothly. And so typically, at this time when we're speaking and sharing in front of you, this whole ceremony has happened, and this year it's had to be pushed back all the way until July? June, it's changed to June, yeah.
Thank you. That's excellent. You know, I've been trying to figure out how I wanted to do this tonight because there are like 22 on my list, which is phenomenal. It is so exciting to see so many students accomplishing so well and working so hard toward that. So I'm just going to say just congratulations to all of you. We are going to call all of... There we go, one of our artists here. I am going to call, I'm going to read all of the names because I do feel like all students, whether they can be here or not, should be recognized here by the board for their hard work and their achievements. But before that, any members of the board, would you like to offer any comments or say anything? Jessica?
I just want to thank the students for sharing their talents with us and thanks to the teachers for supporting their artistry. I would love a copy of the slideshow of all the pieces. If that's something that we could have as a board, they're just beautiful, beautiful works, so congratulations.
Mary?
I want to echo that statement as well. Every year when this comes out, I am just amazed at how their art is in so many different ways. You know, there's the pottery, there's the picture, there's drawings, there's all sorts of things. And I am eternally grateful that we have such dedicated staff that can help and support kids and students in their work and that this is, you know, yes, it's a soft science and it's also incredibly important and to honor it in this way, it means a lot. So thank you for your, for all of your work and dedication and support, because it is a lot. And also, thank you so much to the students for sharing your art with us as well and allowing us to see the world through your eyes.
Thank you, Mary. Julie?
I just have a question, because I've never had a child go through this, but how many categories are there for the artwork? I can see photography, ceramics, and we have our own kiln? We do. We have a couple. That's awesome.
Yeah, all of it.
That's awesome. So is it just like five categories? Or do we have students in all categories get an honorable, at least an honorable mention? I guess that's the question, is like, what categories do we have and did we get a student in all of them?
I don't know if I can give you an exhaustive list of everything, but I know that we have quite a few examples. I know one thing is we don't have any movies, like any animations really or video with editing and music overlays and things like that. And I don't think there's any paintings this year, is there?
Just drawings, yeah.
Yeah, so there is a painting category that we don't have any submissions for this. Or we had a few submissions, but they didn't get on the list. But yeah, I don't know how, I mean, I think there's like nine different categories.
It looks like a lot, and I was just really thrilled to see the variety. That's just something that appeals to me a great deal is that we're able to give students a wide range of art medium, and so I really appreciate that very much.
They brought film photography back instead of just the digital? And I was like, I think we passed on that category. No darkroom, and that's okay.
Congratulations to all of you and the students. I just wanted to reiterate that for many years in this district, we've talked about having our hearts in the arts. And, you know, we have robust art programming pre-K all the way up through our high school program. And so I also want to just highlight our elementary and our middle school art programs as well. And, you know, this is the amazing culmination of many years of work. And I know that the both visual and performing art teachers across the district are so collaborative and work together, K-12. And so I just really appreciate all the work that you've done. And I'm really looking forward to the art expression show at Silverwood to see even more art, and I think it might be May 15 and May 16 at Silverwood Park, something like that?
Yep, yes.
All right, perfect, so, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so here's my plan, here's what I've come up with. I'm going to step away from here and I'm going to go over here because when I call the students, and if you're here, I'd like you to come up and receive your certificate. We're going to do a handshake and a photo op. And then the board members line up here and we're going to have you go through the line and shake their hands. We'll see if the microphone works, otherwise I'm just going to use my mom voice because nobody said I needed a microphone ever, so. And I'm going to do my very best with your names, so when I read them, please come up. So as I mentioned, I'll read all the names for all the students. So first we have Sanam Muradi, is Sanam here? Sanam Muradi had a Gold Key and a Silver Key Award. Then is it Asa Rudy? All right, and Asa had an honorable mention and a Silver Key Award. And then Joanna Ukulema? An honorable mention and a Silver Key. Congratulations. It's a process. All right, and next we have Amelia Shellack earning a Silver Key Award. Amir Howard.
He's in Trenton.
Winner of a Golden Key Award. Una Ali, Silver Key recipient. Justin Alvarez Mertan, honorable mention. Vincent Brown. This is the Silver Key recipient. Roberto Dela Orao was a Silver Key recipient. Allison Dixon, Silver Key recipient. Emily Perez Bueno, an honorable mention recipient. Felice Hill is a Gold Key recipient. Elizabeth Lee, honorable mention. Friday Lee, Gold Key. Ray Mum, Silver Key. Sharon Narvez Piza. Oh, synchronized swimming?
Yeah, they're all doing it.
Williana Hearn. Jenny Sandberg, Silver Key. Jennifer Ukulema Gorman, Silver Key. And that should be everything. There's no student here that's not got called, right? All right, a big round of applause for all of our students. Oh, before you go, one quick, Mary has a question.
I have a, I have one more question for our wonderful teachers and the students that are here. Those of you who have done this process before, what is something that you would, that you would tell students about this process so that they would feel more confident in their own ability to present and participate in this? Because I did hear it was a submission that they had to make. So is there anybody that would have a second or would want to? Heck no, I don't blame you, okay. It's also open to the teachers if you haven't, if you've heard anything.
Well, I think you learn a lot by submitting, a lot. You learn a lot by trying. And success never is the exact measure of your learning, it's the effort, I think. So even when they don't, a lot of people tried really hard and learned a lot, and they'll be up there probably very soon.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And students and your families, this is the time that I tell you that school board meetings are riveting, exciting, fun. But you do not have to stay. So we are not offended if you all get up and walk out and enjoy your day and do your homework and have good fun, but you're also more than welcome to stay if you like.
We will continue on with our business. Next is our Agenda Approval Adjustments and Announcements. We'll start first with our approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Mary, and a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next we have our announcements. On May 14th, Tuesday at 5:00 p.m., we have a Subcommittee on Policy in the Community Room. On May 14th, Tuesday at 5:00 p.m., we have a Subcommittee on Community Engagement in the Training Room. May 14th, Tuesday, 6:00 p.m., we have a regular school board meeting in the Community Room. May 21st, Tuesday at 5:30 p.m., we have a work session in the Columbia Academy Library. And on May 28th, Tuesday at 6:00 p.m., we have a regular school board meeting here in the Community Room. Next we have our communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time, and time is limited to three minutes per speaker. Do we have anybody wishing to address the board? All right, next we will move on to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes the Personnel Report from April 23rd, Policy Second Reading of Policies 405 Veterans' Preference, 409 Employee Publication, 410 Family and Medical Leave Policy, 413 Harassment and Violence, 711 Video Recording on School Buses, and 712 Video Surveillance Other Than School Buses. It also includes the minutes from the April 9th Regular Meeting, April 16th Work Session, and Special Called Meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Julie, and a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next we have our Acknowledgement of Contributions. A second, I have to make it big enough for me to read on the screen. Our Acknowledgement of Contributions is a resolution, so I will read this resolution. Acknowledgement of Contributions Resolution. Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits the school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. On that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District Number 13, resolves to accept with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background of $10,966.24. The Early Childhood Parent Advisory Council donated $150.82 to the Early Childhood Family Education Program for Materials. An anonymous donor donated $5,000 to Columbia Heights High School for the William B. and June E. Keether Designated Fund. Donations to Columbia Heights High School for the Retired Staff Scholarship were made by Corliss Johnson and Jean Richards, each for $25. Connie Hansen for $75. Jean and Robert Richards for $100. Harlan and Molly Downing for $200. Scott and Anne Larson for $250. Pamela Segardson for $300. Pat Johnson for $2,000. Lindsay Lang donated $2,000 to Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund, COP Family. And Scott and Laura Martinson donated $975. And Megan Adamski donated $25 to the Columbia Heights Scholarship Fund, Highland Alumni. Alka Jane and Reka Patel each donated $200 to the Columbia Heights Scholarship Fund for Valley View. Value in Kind, Donors Choose donated glaze for clay projects to Valley View for art projects valued at $440.42. And Tumble Track donated two balance beams and two eight-foot logs valued at $1,000 for Valley View Physical Education classes. Total fiscal year 2023-2024 monetary contributions to date, $99,347.36. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Laura, and a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle, any discussion? Laura?
Oh, as always, we are so incredibly grateful for the dedication to the scholarship fund, to our students' needs, and for physical education. I see some equipment there that I think is going to be very well-used and very much appreciated, so. What more can we say? We're just, we're really grateful for all the support our students get.
Absolutely, well said, thank you. Any other discussion? As this is a resolution, we'll do a roll call vote. Michelle?
Yes, Maderes?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Who?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Resolution passes, thank you. Next we'll move on to our Discussion Reports and Information Items, and we'll start with reports from members of the board, and we will start with Laura.
I have a very short report. The only thing I really have participated in the last few weeks was I was honored to be able to sit on the panel for the new police chief and be part of that process with the community. And wonderful candidates. I did not envy the decision the mayor was going to need to make. So that was very nice to be part of that process. That's it.
Thank you, Laura.
Very short.
Michelle?
Also kind of a short list, I attended Fine Arts Night at North Park where my daughter participated and I got to watch from kindergarten on through fifth grade do their dances and have their artwork displayed as they do every year, and it was just fun to watch and see where all the different levels go, see where we're going to be next year, see where we were last year, so it was very fun to watch. I attended the work session last week at Valley View, which was fun, in the little library chairs, a little bit of sarcasm there. And I also participated in Earth Day Cleanup. I did not help clean up Central Avenue, but because my daughter went, so if you have a child, you get to go clean up a park. So we actually went to go help clean up Bruce Norwalki Park, I believe it's called. There are so many parks in Columbia Heights, and every time we get assigned, it's to a new park, which is fun because we get to discover a new playground area for us to play in. So that was a lot of fun as well, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Michelle. Mary?
Okay, well, it was a little bit of a busy couple of weeks. We had the, I had a chair meeting last week with Superintendent Stenbik, and I chaired my first work session, so thank you to everybody who was there. And glad we didn't have it taped, just so I could, you know, get some practice in on that. But it was wonderful to be back at Valley View. It's always such a joy, and there's so many animals there, like it's just delightful. I also had an opportunity to volunteer at Valley View Carnival, which is such a fantastic time, so many students. And one of the best things about it is all of the students who come back to Valley View to volunteer, so either the high schoolers, the middle schoolers. And it's, you know, there was a teacher that stayed, Mr. Chow, the music teacher, stayed specifically because it was not part of his work. But he said he wanted to stay because he really wanted to see some of the students that he had had. And even though they were a little bit busy in the beginning, he did not regret it at the end. So that was very nice. You know, lots of connecting with staff and students and families. I also was able to connect with Mayor Marquez Simila, Councilmember Spriggs, Representative Omar, and I spoke with, I think, nearly everybody, even after our... Yep, so yep, I bingoed that one. Yep, wonderful, so thank you.
Yep, thanks, Mary. Jessica?
All right, well, I just have a short report. I attended the work session at Valley View last week with many of you. And then I also attended the Highland PTO meeting, and they're busy planning end-of-the-year activities, including their family picnic. That's their annual event, that's going to be Thursday, May 23rd in the evening. And they'll be providing dinner for all the families, and we usually have some outdoor activities out there, and it's a really a fun night. And then we also heard an exciting announcement from Principal Jenke at Highland that they were approved to host a few AmeriCorps vistas next year to help support their reading efforts. So we got to hear more about what to expect there and what kind of recruitment they're going to be doing, so that was exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
I too attended the work session at Valley View and really enjoyed our conversation about the science of reading. I think that has been really, really interesting to see how much the teachers have to go through to really help our students to read. Also, I've attended the MSBA Phase III training, so I have six hours of that. And tomorrow I have my next one, Phase IV. And that is it.
Thank you. I also have a short report. I had conversations with Member Granland and Superintendent Stenbik. And I want to thank Vice Chair Granland for taking my place and chairing the work session last week and all of your support and encouragement, as I have spent the last couple of weeks being mom and got to see some great synchronized swimming meets, including just before hopping over to this meeting. It's fun, it's my daughter's senior season, so it's great to be able to experience that. And the team is doing phenomenal. We had first-place finishes last week and second-place finishes, and they won meets, and it's so great to see them do so well, so it's been fun. So thank you for that opportunity and your support. Superintendent Stenbik?
Thank you. Piggybacking on Member Maderes, I just wanted to let the board know that Director Takarel is working with AmeriCorps to bring an informational presentation to the boards to provide more information, so very exciting. So thank you so much for bringing that up. I attended the Bright Works Board Meeting last week. The Minnesota Department of Education is dissolving the Regional Centers for Excellence, and Bright Works is going to be absorbing and become kind of the hub for the metro-area implementation of the READ Act. So the Bright Works will be hiring literacy coaches and the regional centers staff. So at the board meeting, participants expressed their support for the READ Act, and I echo that, and at the same time frustration with the timeline. It's a very robust timeline for the professional development. And then also frustration that it's very underfunded when it comes to that professional development and the curriculum. So, yeah, lots of networking in terms of getting that voice heard about the READ Act, support and frustration. Last week, the first class size committee took place. We first established committee norms, and I had the opportunity to provide an overview of the per-pupil funding and the staffing process. I also got to hear teachers' perspectives on the topic. I've had many meetings with principals and directors as we're nearing the end of this school year and planning for next year. And today, a fun thing, today is National Bus Driver Appreciation Day. So this morning, a team of district staff started our day at Columbia Academy to personally thank each of our bus drivers. And we were joined by very enthusiastic middle schoolers who held up thank you signs and also, you know, jumped up on the bus and thanked the bus drivers. So what a great way to start the day. There'll be a photo in your packet, no doubt. And since the last board meeting, I've had communication with Chair Mueller, Vice Chair Granland, Member Petway, and Member Who. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you so much. Next we'll move on to summer programming. We have Executive Director Niemwe, Director Stinkel, and Director Godfrey.
I can't stop sharing. Nope, it's on the it's on the on the desktop. Wonder why this one wants to. And then she'll, there we go. Now we're cooking with gas, as my grandmother would say.
I use that phrase all the time.
Well, it's it's like moving all over. That's right there.
I was waiting. Yeah, I was waiting for Brian to come over.
Yep.
He has to hover and it works.
He's the mechanic. As soon as you take your car.
Brian just had to go stand behind.
This is an example of the teamwork that our admin team has. Thank you, everybody.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, we're here this evening to present a forecast of what our summer programs will be for our district. Our mission, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, all year long. I just added that to the mission. All of our core values will be represented in this evening's presentation, and all of our core values in this evening's presentation will also be aligned with the district's equity statement. This evening's presentation is informational only. There are no governance questions for you. So the goals for summer programs are always to provide reading and math interventions, opportunities for high schoolers to earn credit, multilingual language support, opportunities for fitness, service required by individualized education plans or IEPs, opportunities for enrichment of all ages, and high-quality childcare. We'll start with our youngest learners. So during the summer, it's an important time to continue to offer early childhood screening. You'll remember that that's a requirement for students entering into our threes, fours, and kindergarten programs. So our early our ECFE teacher will be doing that throughout the summer. We also have our Mini Adventures Childcare Program throughout the summer. And then we have meetups. We started this last summer. It was very popular, going to different parks throughout the community, meeting up with families who have children under the age of kindergarten. It's a nice way for them to stay connected during the summer and for us to use the beautiful parks that exist in our community. For the school-age programming, we also have the childcare called Adventure Club that takes place here in the family center. We'll be hiring five or six high school assistants. This is a partnership with Inoka County Jobs Program called Empower. We'll provide drivers' education so that our young drivers are safe on the road. There'll be a June session and an August session. We're offering an engineering explorers program, and then also summer aquatics. With activities and athletics, thank you, Jake and Crystal, a variety of fitness and sports opportunities for our secondary students. Adults are also students in our district. So we have adult enrichment programs. The next slide, we'll go into details of that. And then adult basic education programs with our partnership with Metro North Adult Basic Ed. That's located at 4111 Central, and it's all free. I just have to put in a plug for that. Great program. Most of those programs are offered virtually or online, which is really working well for the adult learners with childcare and and transportation concerns. A lot of programs that we're offering through our adult enrichment, and thanks to our adult enrichment part-time coordinator, Emma Butte, who's providing great fitness classes, other classes especially focused for seniors, but also some trips, a trip to the Guthrie for a little shop of horrors. Doesn't that sound like fun? And and then also partnering with our FACS teacher, our Family and Consumer Science teacher, for a couple of classes this summer on cooking and utilizing Blooming Heights. With that, I'll pass the the floor over to Executive Director Niemwe.
Thank you, Directors Tonkow. So in the past, Summer Encore offers opportunity for academic learning for all our students. And so tonight, I will be speaking to a couple of the offering that we have. And it's also important to recognize that our Summer Encore has always been grant-funded. So the summer, the EL Summer Reading Program has a history in this district where teachers used to go in the homes of students, read for them, leave books, and then take off. And then they come back a week later, they read with the students again in their home or outside their homes, and then they leave. And so it goes on like that. And we use that program to be able to stabilize the reading level or academics of students so that they don't have to incur a summer slide. Unfortunately, when COVID came, that program went in pause. And so this summer, we're restarting the Summer Reading Program for Yale students. And we are targeting students in the elementary grades. And the program starts on July 8 until July 25. And the location will be Valley View. Initially, we had wanted to do two locations to use the public library, but upon conferring with the public library, we are unable to host it at the library. So the only site will be Valley View. But we'll be able to bring in our library partner two times during the duration of the program. And teachers will be provided an opportunity to prepare for the program. And we are looking forward to engaging our Yale students from nine until 12. And the registration is targeting up to about 240 students. The second opportunity that we have is the Credit Recovery Program, which again, every summer, we run it for students in grade nine through 12 with our partnership with 916. And we always find that beneficial for students who are short on credit so that they get the opportunity to work closely with some teachers and make up the credits that they need. And that program again will start on June 17 and go until July 25. And it's only be from 8 to 12. And we are very intentional about respecting June 10. And there will not be summer school during that day. And in addition to that, because people like to travel during the month of July, so there will be no school from the first and the fourth of July. And as you know, for a long time, we have offered some additional programs. And so for this summer, the Advanced Placement Boost is tentative, and that depends on the enrollment that we receive. And then secondly, our partnership with St. Anthony and New Brighton is supported with our Achievement and Integration Program. And so we will be running two sessions as indicated on the slide. And I will pass the next part of the presentation to Sarah.
Thank you. So summer programming within special education, we'll start again with our littlest learners. Early Childhood Special Education ESY services per students' IEPs will be held at the family center for qualifying students. Early Childhood Special Education students will also receive home and community visits for zero to three-year-olds, again per their their IEP or their IFSP. And early childhood special education evaluations will be completed over the summer. That is separate from the screenings that Director Stenkel was talking about a little bit earlier. So programming will take place in June, again close June 19. And June 6 and 7 will be where we do some PD to get ready for students to come after school. And then programming will take place in different groups. So from 8:30 to 10:00 AM will be our first group, and then 10 to 11:30 will be our second group with no programming on Fridays, and that will run Monday through Thursday. This is our extended school year for students in grades kindergarten through transition. And I smile, this is, these are our students from programming from last year. We had so much fun. I was able to join them on several field trips. So we went to the Sculpture Garden, and we went to a few different parks. We went on several walking field trips, too, and we had a great time. So the location for this will be at the high school this year for all students in grade currently in kindergarten through transition. Programming will take place in June through July, close that first week of July, and close June 19 with a prep day on June 14, running in the mornings again Monday through Thursday.
Thank you. Any questions from members of the board? Mary?
Um, just a couple of questions. First, can we get the presentation in our?
Thank you.
And then Executive Director Bundo Niemwe, why did they say why we couldn't partner and have a second spot at the library? Did they elaborate as to why we couldn't meet there?
Yeah, so our program starts at 9:00 AM until 12, and the library didn't open until 10. And so that was one of the reason why it was causing some, in terms of timing, we will not be able to do that. And then I think they have some other programs that are taking place that will be in conflict with our program. And as a result, the librarian has elected to come two times during the summer when we invite her to Valley View.
That's fantastic. I really appreciate that. And it's really nice to see and to hear that, you know, the partnership is still there and that there's it's just a timing issue. And that's what I assumed, but I wanted to make sure. Thank you. And then lastly, I just want to clarify for you, Director Godwin, ESY is mandated by law, correct?
Um, it's part of a student's IP that we look at and consider. And then if they have if they qualify for extended school year services through things like regression or unique needs, then we make that ESY plan, Extended School Year Plan, and we send it home. So we stand ready to serve. We have teachers and paraprofessionals and a school psychologist, too, that will be joining us to provide services. And students can come if they if they want to come, if their if their parents want them to come. So we send those plans home if they qualify, and then parents can opt in or not. Some parents feel that the students need a break over the summer. Some parents feel that that extra service is a bit of a bump for them. So we we leave it up to them. We do send home communication in English and Spanish, asking for communication with additional phone calls in their home language, and then CSO messages, too, from our early childhood team.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Michelle?
Um, I was just curious as to what transportation looked like for the different programs. I mean, I know they're like different, so it may look different for the different areas that you all cover.
Um, transportation will be provided for students attending ESY.
We don't provide transportation for the childcare programs or for our community ed programs that I mentioned. So that's something that parents bring the children to.
The Summer Reading Program, students will be walking to school. And then for the Credit Recovery, student transportation is provided through the Achievement and Integration budget.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Their questions? Jessica?
Well, first of all, I just want to thank you all very much for the presentation. And I also want to recognize how all of the hard work that goes into prioritizing all of these programs, organizing all of these programs, and then scaffolding them all together into a framework. I know that there are many folks across the district that work on putting these programs together and also go after various resources to fund the programming that we have. I guess this is more of a comment, Chair Mueller, so I apologize. But I also just want to recognize that while we still have some really essential offerings for families this summer in our district, and I'm so glad that we're able to meet the needs of those particular populations and that we're able to prioritize those needs, we really do have a very significant loss in what we're able to offer as a district as a result of losing that 21st century grant funding and just the fact that we haven't been able to receive any, you know, resources to kind of make up some of that gap. So that is a big loss, especially falling in the same year that that Summer Academy has sunsetted. So there is a kind of a gap for many families in the district who have participated in summer programming before. And so, one, I just wanted to recognize that that does have impact on our families and our students over the summer. And then, two, I just wanted to ask about communication around that. I mean, normally, we wouldn't be in the business of saying, here's what we're not offering. But I do know that especially in the case of something like Summer Encore that has been established in the district over many years, that there are families that are probably assuming, right, that some of that regular programming is happening again this summer. So I'm just wondering kind of how we're communicating what is available. I know, you know, what other offerings are available through the cities that we that are in our service area. Long-winded question, but yeah, whatever, however, you can kind of fill that in.
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate that question. And what's wonderful, one of the many things that's wonderful about this community is our close relationship with the Columbia Heights Recreation Department and the Columbia Heights Library. And many staff work very closely with both of the the leadership of both of those departments all the time to make sure that we're not being redundant and that we're identifying gaps. And this is really a year when we're going to be elevating even more than we typically do, the offerings through those other organizations, too, so that families, you know, in as you, I'm sure you all read to the very bottom of your CHPS update every week, and where we say, we talk about the offerings. But this, we usually don't go into a lot of detail unless there's something specific that they ask us to do. But this time, we're really going to be providing more specifics around that. We also, about a month or so ago in the update, indicated what we knew we were going to offer. And just this morning, some of the offerings this were finalized for the summer. So as things get finalized, we'll be pushing that out in our digital communications. And then Emma is also finalizing our Community Connections newsletter, you know, that gets mailed out. But there again, we just had to wait until we knew some things, which was many of those were funding dependent. And so that caused the delay in us saying more until we knew what we could afford to offer. So I hope that that explains. But but yes, you're right that that people will notice that we don't have Summer Encore, for example. But there are so many things that the library and the rec department are offering, and they have been able to draw on additional funds to keep their prices lower free. I think the the library program is all free, and and some of that has they funded, they funded it through other ways. So this really is a summer also to make sure that everybody is fully exploring what's on offer through those organizations, too.
Thank you very much. That was a very comprehensive answer, and I really do appreciate the partnerships that the district has with the city. And I also am just thinking about some of the great offerings that Fridley has through their their city as well. And so, yeah, anything we can do to kind of promote those opportunities is great. So thank you for that.
If I can just say really quickly, when we lost the funding, it gave us an opportunity to strengthen our partnership with Inoka County Jobs. So like, for example, we're not losing the Blooming Heights Assistance that had been funded through 21CCLC. Now that's being funded through Inoka County. And in fact, the students are going to make even more money and have other offerings through that. So sometimes, you know, that that idea of when a door closes, a window might open is is in this case very much true. So thank you.
Thank you for that example. There was a much more articulate way, I think, of making the point I was trying to make earlier, which is that everyone is very involved in going after any kind of partnerships or resources or just relationships that allow us to be creative in. creative in making things happen for our students, for our community members, and for our families. So that's a perfect example. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you all. Next, we will move on to the 2025-2026 calendar with Director Bennett.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. In your packet was a draft of the 2025-2026 school calendar. The committee that met to do next year's calendar met and developed a draft for the following school year. Some of the highlights include, the first day of school will be September 1st, 2025. The committee received good feedback on having the Thanksgiving, or the day before Thanksgiving as a no school day for students and most of the staff. Parent feedback also and attendance concerns is a good, another good reason to have that day as a no school. Given the way the holidays fall, there'll be a two-week break again at wintertime. We try to stay away from this, but just the way it falls, it's hard to have kids come back for a Friday or a Monday. Spring break will be the last week in March of 2026, and the last day for students will be June 10th, 2026. So it's the first year we've done two calendars. So the plan is, at the next board meeting, to bring it forward as part of the consent agenda, where the board would approve the draft. And then next January, we'd bring it back as an approval without the draft.
Thank you. And just a clarification, the first day of school will be September 2nd. You may have said first, or I heard.
It's the second.
But it's Tuesday. Right. Okay. Just making sure. Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Jessica?
Thank you for all of the work in getting sort of multi-year calendaring done. I'm just curious about sort of the anticipated future of calendar planning. Is the idea to stay on sort of a multi, like every annually, the calendar committee would look at the next two years?
Yeah, that's the plan. A lot of districts do, they'll have one year approved, and then the next year's a draft. And then that would get approved, and the next year's a draft. So we've gotten feedback that people kind of want to have that two-year perspective. So that is the plan going forward, is to always have one approved calendar, one draft.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then I just also had a question just around flex learning days. I know when we approved the 24-25 calendar, we talked about kind of the rationale for why there were so many flex days, at least for next year, and its connection to the RED Act. And I'm just wondering if you can talk a little bit about how flex learning days factor into the 25-26 year, sort of what's driving those flex learning days?
Yeah, so for 24-25, it has a lot to do with the RED Act. So we did add one additional day. So usually, when we start doing the calendar, I work with the superintendent and the director of teaching and learning to see what the plan is. And so this would allow for the 25-26, two flex learning days, so they'd be able to have data time in the afternoon. I don't know enough about the RED Act to know if they need a, supposedly, they don't need a third day that year. But this year was due to the RED Act, we added an extra day.
To add on to what Director Bennett said, this is a discussion at the calendar committee, and we really do seek feedback from parents about, is it challenging to have a flex learning day or not? So the idea would be going back to the two. And these are days where 10 years ago, we would get, have substitute teachers, and teams of teachers would be, for half a day, we would have a sub. And then teams of teachers would meet for half a day to discuss data and review data and make plans based on student data and progress. And then the sub would swap out, and another team of teachers would have a half day. Just over the years, as we have seen the challenges in acquiring enough substitute teachers to do that on a daily basis, or on an annual basis. In talking with the parents and the committee, people felt that it was a worthwhile use of time to both provide that direct instruction via Zoom, but then also teacher teams having the afternoon to collaborate around academic progress data and make plans in order to have that scaffolded and supported instruction.
And then I suppose another model would be, if you're thinking about like the evolution of like what's been done in the past, is, you know, having like a half-day model where the students are in school half the day with their teachers, and then there's like, you know, a midday dismissal. I suppose there are real transportation issues that come into play with a model like that, or are there other challenges related to that model?
Yeah, I think based on everything that we learned during the pandemic and the fact that people got pretty savvy with Zoom, the committee discussed continuing it via Zoom. And I'm not sure if there was much conversation about half-day and the transportation. But transportation certainly is a challenge for those.
There was more for last school year. It was the transportation issue, and it was just feedback that it's a lot easier to have kids learn from home in the morning than try to spend the time in the afternoon bussing them out and just with bussing issues. So it was both the parent and administration teachers, other people on the committee prefer to have it flex learning. Plus, they keep, if we do have to have like a snow day and we have to learn via Zoom, kids are still learning and kind of still in that mode. So if we ever have to do that, that they kind of still remember how.
Thanks. I just know this is, you know, not something that existed five years ago. So as, you know, we're approving each year calendar, something that was like a product of the pandemic is now becoming, you know, part of our regular practice. And so I think it's just important to hear kind of what the discussion was at the committee level and how we're kind of assessing and evaluating how that's working for folks. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So this is planning to be this draft calendar on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Great. Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is policy first reading. The policy first readings include 101.1, Name of the District. Everybody should review that one. 104, School District Mission Statement. 501, School Weapons Policy. 502, Search of Students, Lockers, Desk, and Person. 901, Community Education. And 905, Advertising. Those are available on the district website for review and comment before the second reading. I will say that I think the Subcommittee on Policy, we had some really great discussion on several of these policies, and I think we've made some really good amendments to these policies in the best interest of our students. So I would encourage you to take a look at them. Laura?
I just want to commend the Policy Subcommittee for reviewing even policies that seem, just to make sure, you know, I mean, just because Name of the School District does not seem like it's going to change all that much. It is really important to actually look at everything that we're doing, just to make sure that we are, that we are doing the process correctly. So I just, and keeping to that three-year rotation, you've been doing a wonderful job. And I envy you because I miss the Policy Subcommittee.
I do not.
Excellent. Thank you.
Next year.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Next, we'll move on to our action items. We will welcome Activities Director Henderson to the front. Thank you for coming in. I know we had asked that this be put under action items for the fee increase.
Thank you. Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, thank you all for having me again. I come to you this evening just with a short action item. On April 9th, 2024, the previous board meeting, I presented information on a fees increase for activities participation. You can see those increases, I believe, in your board packet. And it is my recommendation that the activity participation fees are increased just as they are shown in your packet.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve the activity fee increases as presented?
So moved.
Laura, and a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Discussion. Julie?
Director Henderson, do we, when people pay the fee, is it for the year then for all activities, or is it per activity? I just want to make sure I understand.
No, that's a good question. It's per activity. And there is an $850 limit per family too, just so that you all are aware of that. That comes into play sometimes.
Great. Thank you. Great point. Other discussion? Mary?
I just want to thank you so much for the conversation at our last board meeting about this. We had some questions sort of beforehand, and you did a really great job of answering them. So thank you for that. And I, you know, it's important, we have to, we do still have to charge fees for kids to be involved in things. And also, I know that we work really hard as a school to make sure that no matter what, kids can participate. And I appreciate that. And I think that this just provides a little bit more support so that in 20 years, we're not like coming and asking for a massive increase. I mean, you know, not like there's a precedent for that in our district or anything, but no. So I appreciate this. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. I agree.
Yeah. And I will say, since our last meeting, and again, thank you for answering all of our questions. As I mentioned earlier, I've been spending some time with the synchronized swimming team. So I've actually been asking the other schools that we've been competing against what their activity fees are, to just get an idea of, you know, and they're not always, believe me, they're not always similar schools. But the costs are much higher. And so I do appreciate.
At other schools.
At the other schools. Thank you. At the other schools, the costs are much higher. So I do appreciate the sensitivity to making sure that we are collecting some revenue to help offset the costs of these programs, but yet not making our fees a barrier to participation. And I think you've done a nice job of finding that balance. And I think it's appropriate, as inflation happens, to do nominal increases. And I do feel like these are nominal increases. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Jessica?
I just wanted to add my voice to that as well. I really appreciate the recognition of fee-based programming as a barrier to many families and the really thoughtful way that you and your team think about connecting students who may not be able to participate without scholarship opportunities, the chance to do that, and making sure they're connected with those resources. So I'm in support of this resolution, and I just really appreciate that recognition and commitment to keeping our activities inclusive and accessible for all of the students in our district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Here and then, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Next, we have our transportation contract with Director Hennigan.
Transportation.
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 He's trying to butt in front of me. Oh, I have to be there for that one too, so I guess.
I was like, really, Director Hennigan, you're in the next three, so it really doesn't.
You just get comfy.
Okay, just give me one second here. Oops. I'm trying to close some of the things down here. Okay. Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik, this first item that I have this evening is the Student Services Transportation Agreement. This was presented at the April 9th meeting in detail, more detail. This evening, we're just seeking approval for the next two years of this contract with the option of a two-year extension, continuing with Monarch as our current transportation company. And this approval will give the superintendent authorization to sign that contract.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve authorization of the superintendent to execute the Student Transportation Service Agreement with Monarch Bus Service, Inc. as presented?
So moved.
Laura, second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Jessica?
I just want to confirm, since we don't have a copy of the agreement in today's board book, there haven't been any changes to the agreement since the April 9th version that was presented to us?
Yeah, no, the agreement was in the April 9th, and that was signed already previously by Monarch. So now this evening is just executing our signature on that, basically. And so it is a much lower increase than we've seen in the previous couple of years. And it depends on what area you're looking at, and it depends on our utilization in, mostly in special education, whether we needed more buses or less buses, but about a two and a half percent increase, which, again, we previously saw, you know, eight and 11, over 11% increase in the previous two. So definitely a better year for us in increases in transportation.
Thank you.
Laura?
I just want to thank you for making sure that we had this, the contract, extended out. So shortage of bus drivers and being able to have, make sure that our students had transportation to school. I'm very, very happy to see this, and it's one thing that I don't have to worry about. And I really appreciate all the work that goes into this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Here and then, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Next, Director Hennigan, you're still with us for the revised 2023-2024 budget.
Okay, now I'm gonna share my screen here. Okay. And I will make that bigger. I promise. Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. Okay, so the next item I have is the fiscal year '24 revised budget. And this was presented in detail at the previous school board meeting, the work session. And so this evening, I'm going to go through some of the highlights of the revised budget. And, but not in the hour-long detail that we went through at the work session, I promise. So we know that, you know, over the previous few years, really coming into COVID and coming out of COVID, financially very challenging for our district and many districts across the state and nation. Last year, coming out of FY '23, we were able to move our fund balance up and back into fund balance policy. And our goal, again, is to continue to maintain in that fund balance policy and not be in the area of the, kind of the cusp of cash flow borrowing, not being in fund balance policy, but, you know, being able to have enough revenues on hand or cash on hand to be able to make decisions when we have more students that come and we have needs that are there. And so, you know, that's definitely a big goal of ours, and I know of the boards as well. And so I think we'll see that in this budget for this year and what we predict. So that fund balance, that unassigned fund balance of just under $2.5 million is what we came out of last year with. That's not a lot of cash on hand, you know, and, you know, $500,000 swing would be in the realm of cash flow borrowing. So, you know, we're just really out of that cash flow borrowing area. So for this year, the revised revenues, we'll focus on that area, is to start with, the revenues and expenditures, I'll kind of just step through it. But revenues at $42,800,000 roughly, and expenditures of $40,800,000. So obviously, a positive in the sense that our revenues are exceeding our expenditures. This is not a ton different than what we anticipated in the prelim. In the prelim, anticipated about a $1.1 million more in revenues than expenses. And not a very straightforward way of ending up in about the same place. I mean, we're about a $1.9 million difference, about $800,000 difference in the prelim. And not a very straightforward way of ending up in about the same place. I mean, we're about a $1.9 million difference, about $800,000 difference in the prelim. There's been some pretty big ups and downs in that conversation. We have an additional 80 ADM in the district right now than what we predicted in the preliminary. So we still saw an influx of immigrant students coming to our district. So we see that additional revenue this year. From last year, we saw additional compensatory revenue than what we anticipated. And from last year to this year, or in this year, we saw additional grant funding than what we anticipated. And so, and, you know, it wasn't like additional $1,000 here, additional $1,000 there. There were real dollars there. When you're talking about 80 students, that's real money. So, and we also saw some changes in expenses. It was a light winter. And so it didn't cost as much to heat our buildings. And it was so warm this winter that we saved over $100,000 in heating our buildings, so so a big change is there. So these are positive things, definitely for us in heading into the next year where we know, where we've already settled a teacher's contract, and we've talked about kind of the preliminary, what that looks like for fiscal year '25 in those expenses. But just looking back at this, so I mentioned that compensatory, so you can see that our expenses, you know, just shy of $10.2 million in compensatory revenue, which does include our EL revenue as well, so the basic skills. And so that was one category I mentioned that, you know, we were higher than what we anticipated. I, you know, it was about a half million dollars in that area. The next area I talked about were that grants area, so you can see $3.14 million in that grants area. Again, you know, we saw a pretty significant increase in that area than what we predicted, which was about $800,000. In part, a little over half of that is COVID funding that we didn't anticipate that we were going to have, that we did have this year. So not as much as what we were looking at in the previous years, the three to four million range in COVID funding that we were spending. But still, you know, a significant dollar amount. And what that does is it brings those expenses into that assigned area and keeps it out of the unassigned area, so it just, it increases our unassigned total revenue in the end. So you can see here, total general funds, so we have more than just Fund One, the general fund, but total general fund just shy of $61 million in revenues, and then just over $58 million in expenses. And so, and you go down to the other funds, oops, I zoomed in accidentally. And just to step into the other funds, Food Service Fund, you know, that's a fund that's been very healthy for us coming out of the pandemic. And now with universal meals, we're seeing more kids eating lunch, and so we have the reimbursement that comes with that. So we have more revenues coming in. We have staffed up a little bit. We've been repairing kitchens and serving lines and stuff, so we've been spending more, so we definitely see a much higher revenue and a much higher expense in that area, but we're still carrying a very healthy fund balance in that area. Community education, again, we've talked about, that's a hard-hit fund across the state, across the nation, because it is, there are a lot of fee-based within that. So, you know, we do anticipate about $127,000 decrease in that fund. So it does have the fund balance to cover it, but we have a lot of work to do in that area moving forward. Building Construction Fund, that's our capital projects levy. We haven't been carrying a lot of money there. I do anticipate, I mentioned in the previous meeting, that we're going to start carrying more in that area in the next few years, try to build up some addition, or some cash balance there so that we can do some larger projects, that we just can't afford with the money we receive year in and year out. And then our dental fund is doing just fine. We're self-insured for dental, and so we'll see that. I again predict increasing this year a little bit, as it did last year, because previous to that, we had seen four out of five years of decrease. So that was one that we were looking closely at, but it's heading the right direction as well. And the Open Hub Trust is doing very well for us. So just, you know, looking at the change in balances, again, I mentioned the 1.9, we originally predicted a 1.1. So we're seeing a better there, and again, it's, you know, lower expenses, increased revenues. And, you know, for the most part, in the assigned area, we do spend what we get. But this year, you'll see there's some areas where we see a little bit of balance in the end. You know, in compensatory, we're just barely underspending that total amount. Capital, and you can see that increasing at the top there, the $682, almost $683,000, again, building up to be able to do those purchases. And, you know, seeing a decrease in our medical assistance, third-party billing, but, you know, all in all, fairly balanced in that assigned area. So again, total Fund One, just over, you know, $6 million between the assigned and the unassigned. And just shy of $13.5 million in all funds. So it's a revised budget that, you know, again, isn't too far off of what we predicted in the prelim. It continues to put us in the, in that positive direction of getting the fund balance back to where we can make decisions and spend money when we need to for staff and not say, well, let's think of another solution. And, you know, it doesn't, whether it's regular education, whether it's EL, whether it's special education, all of those areas are areas that, you know, that things happen, students move in, that we need to address. So very happy with, you know, where we're at now. Questions?
Thank you, Director Hennigan. Can I get a motion to approve the revised 2023-2024 budget as presented? So move. Michelle, and a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion?
Yes.
Julie?
I just have a question. We have a scholarship fund.
Yes.
And I noticed that we're not dipping into the balance forward. We're just using what we are getting this year. Is there a permanent restriction on that in some way, or?
Yeah, there's, any scholarships that we take in, that's, there's a current balance or restriction right to that code. And, you know, sometimes things happen like, you know, one year, the student was awarded the scholarship, and then the student didn't end up going to this college. And then, you know, that scholarship still stays in that fund. And it's still restricted for those specific things, but in recent years, they used to be very, much smaller, but in recent years, we've seen larger scholarships. Like the, yes, the Italian-American, thank you. And that Italian-American scholarship has ranged, you know, $40,000, $50,000, $60,000 in a year. And so sometimes it's all about, you know, when the money comes in and when the money goes out, because it may come in in one year and go out in the next fiscal year, most likely. So typically, you know, we try to balance as much as possible, guess is how much we're gonna, it's gonna go out and how much is gonna come in. So it's kind of a guess, but there's always going to be a balance in there.
So the $210,000 that's from June of this year, we can't touch?
We can, oh yeah, yeah. It's, we're not making the decisions on it, though, or I'm not making the decisions on it.
Sure.
It's, you know, that's what the high school and what the scholarship specifically was for.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I was just trying to understand, you know, was that stuck there permanently, and we're just, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? I have, oh, go ahead.
I know we had some discussion about this at the work session, but when you look at the fund balance total, I'm wondering if you can just talk a little bit about what the projected fund balance looks like as a percentage versus what we had initially projected earlier in the year?
Sure. So initially, you know, we, like I said, we projected a 1.1, and that projection put us between a seven and eight percent fund balance projected. And with our current fund balance, I would project it between nine and 10%. You know, one of the factors in this conversation, and we'll see where that happens through, when we're going through the audit process, is one of the things that I'm looking at is, you know, you see these areas here, this is restricted assigned dollars. And those restricted and assigned dollars are not me restricting and assigning it, or the district restricting and assigning it. It's really MDE, the state saying these are restricted and assigned, and this is where they go. The district does have the ability, and I would say most districts do this, to, you know, assign specific funds for things to help with the ebbs and flows of things. And you know, one of those things is special education. You know, in FY '22, special education costs went up by over $2 million from the previous year. And then in FY '23, they went down by $1.2 million. Well, we receive our funding in special education based on the expenses. So our expenses, our revenues went up in FY '23 because our expenses went up in FY '22. But now in FY '23, our expenses went down, so now in FY '24, our revenue goes down. And, you know, so it gets complicated with special education real fast, and so that can create big swings. Not, you know, $1,000, $10,000, over $1 million or $2 million. So, you know, we have never, in recent history, we haven't been in a position to be able to plan for those. And I think now we're in a position where we can try and do a little planning for those. So, but I still, you know, predict that that's where we'll be, we'll be, you know, again, we predicted a 1.1, but we're higher than that. So we're $800,000 more. So it definitely is impactful. But we also have to be mindful of those things so that we don't, again, get back into that point of, hey, now we're suddenly at that cusp of having a cash flow borrower, at the bottom point, and we don't have a lot of cash on hand, so.
Thank you. And then when you talk about that that fund balance as a percentage, that's the general fund, that's a percentage of the general fund as a whole?
No.
Or is that just unassigned?
Just the unassigned.
Unassigned, okay.
The number would be lower if it was, if it was as a whole.
Right, right, okay, thank you for that. And I asked that question just because I think it underscores the, I guess, unique position that we're in this year, where I think, you know, this is positive news for us for for the 2024 budget and looking at stabilizing our fund balance, at least in the short term. But when I hear you talk about some of the reasons that we have that higher change in fund balance this year, they're not things that we can necessarily count on for the future. You know, if we're dependent on mild winters to, you know, balance our budget, that's probably, probably not a great position to be in, not that we're there.
Right.
So I just wanted to, we had a lot of discussion about that at the work session, but I just wanted this to be on camera for anyone who might watch the recording or is watching streaming, that this is, this is positive news, it gets us in a much more stable position in the short term. But we're still, we still just need to be cautious moving forward, and it doesn't mean that we necessarily have that level of fund balance over, you know, the next several years. So I think that's important. But I have to say that, and you probably asked, if I had a question, you didn't think I was just gonna like wax on forever, so I apologize. But it is, it is a relief to be in a position, at least in the short term, where we are. I think, taking my board hat off for a second and my parent hat, is that, you know, I, my oldest student here is a sixth grader, and he's been enrolled in the district, you know, even before pre-K, and this is the first time, you know, that I've been involved with the district, where we've had this, we've been at this point in the year where we're really able to look at this and say, okay, what's next, and look towards the future, instead of trying to have to make some really difficult decisions and cuts that really impact our staff and our families and our students. So I'm glad that we're in the position that we are in, and I just wanted to add some context, I guess publicly, about where we are in the short term and what that does and does not mean for the next few years. So, thank you for that.
Yes.
Julie?
I do want to point out, though, that we are in deficit spending the next year. And that fund balance of 4.4 that we're seeing as of this coming June is going to be reduced significantly. I think during our work session, Director Hennigan, you mentioned a $3.6 million dip in those numbers, extra expenditures because of the new contracts that we have signed. So I want to make sure that, although we're rejoicing now and we're thankful for your stewardship, that we still have challenges going forward. And I just want the public to really understand that.
Yeah, Julie, I think both what you said and what Jessica said are the notes that I wanted to touch on as well. And I think as a board, we've, you know, at other meetings, have talked about our fund balance policy. And looking at, you know, what that should be, and it's something that I will be bringing to all of you coming up shortly, as we, as we look at what that needs to be. And as Director Hennigan's very much pointed out, and you didn't know I was gonna say this, but, you know, looking at, you know, when you presented the numbers, and you said we were $500,000, you know, swing from cash flow borrowing. And Jessica, what you had said is, you know, looking at where we are financially as a district and what our fund balance policy is, and does that allow us to have those swings of a not mild winter? A winter that's colder than average, that has more snow than average, that has a broken boiler system, that, you know, has a transportation, you know, issues. And so our job isn't done as a board in terms of making sure that we're fiscally responsible for this board, for this district now and for years to come. I think we still have some work to do yet in the next couple of months to determine, you know, how we set our board up and future boards and districts and staff up for financial success. And for due diligence for our community, so that those that pay our, the taxes that support our communities, or or that support our schools are aware of, you know, what our needs are and that we have the funding available to do as we've promised. So great, great comments, and I think more to come in terms of, you know, passing this revised budget, as we look at future budgets to come, and fund balance policies, and how to make, how to make sure that we're continuing to be fiscally responsible. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. And now we'll have Director Bennett join us for the principals' contract.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. We presented last week at the work session information on the principals' contract for 2023 to 2025. Some of the highlights include, for, it'll be this school year, for '23-'24, a salary increase of 2.25, which is the same as what teachers received. And then for year two, 4% for principals not at the top of the salary schedule, and 6% for those at the top of the salary schedule. Increase to longevity and changing from seven years down to five years. Added was goal pay for principals, not for assistant principals, just for principals. And they would, only for the second year of the contract, they develop a goal or goals with the superintendent at the start of the school year with quarterly, if not more, check-ins to make sure the goals are met. One-time market adjustment in both years of the contract. And this would put the principal salaries kind of middle of the, bottom of the middle of the pact with comparison districts. We will be starting a labor management committee with the principals, and also a committee to discuss post-employment health benefits. And those are both memorandums of understanding at the end. So those were the highlights. So tonight, we're here seeking approval of the contract.
Great, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the master agreement between independent school district number 13, Columbia Heights, and the district principals covering school years 2023 to 2025 as presented? So move. Michelle, and a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have board topics. Does anybody have any board topics? Michelle?
I have a question, I guess. So is there going to be a play or a musical or something this weekend?
Yes, I would need to look at the calendar.
It's on the calendar, but there's nothing.
There is a, there's a.
Listed.
There is a high school play, The Day the Internet Died.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure I remember off the top of my head, but I see Director Stunkel.
It says to Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, but it does, it's just not listed what it is.
Yes.
It's not listed.
Like what the play is.
Oh.
Oh, description above, by the way? So I'm just checking in our CHPS update, because I know we promoted it.
Yeah, and I'm like, well, did I miss it? I just probably didn't see it.
I believe it's a comedy called The Day the Internet Died.
Because, you know, I'm all about promoting.
Absolutely.
And it does say, so the show is a comedy with a 70-minute runtime and is suggested for an audience of 12 years old and older.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
It's this Friday, April 26th at 7:00, Saturday, April 27th at 7:00, and Sunday, April 28th at 2:00.
Excellent. Thank you. That, look at that, more teamwork that would just happen here at the board table.
Thank you, guys.
Mary?
I just want to, I meant to say this in my board update, but I just wanted to make the community aware and the other board members aware that a former student, John Sees, was in a pretty awful car accident the last few weeks. And he sustained like 20 to 30% burns on his body while he was trying to save his friend. Unfortunately, our students, you know, he, he is still our student, he will always be our student. And so I just wanted to let everyone know that there is a GoFundMe available, and you can check it out if you are able to support him and his family. Because burns are really, really hard to, to recover from in some, you know, some ways. There's a lot of things that are gonna, he's gonna need help with. So I just wanted to sort of let everybody know and to the family and to John to let him know that we are thinking about him and we are sending our love and our support, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other board topics? I just have one. As you know, it's full-on Synchronos season for me right now. Our synchronized swimming team has their end-of-the-year show on Thursday, May 9th. A Thursday?
What?
We're excited about this. Thursday, May 9th at 5:00 PM in the high school show, our high school pool. They do call their show "The Greatest Show in H2O", so be prepared to be dazzled. They would love to have everybody's support. So it's a, it's a great fun time.
You said it was May what?
May 9th.
Thank you.
Yep, at 5:00 PM. Any other?
Sorry, I'm trying to get all my dates together because I'm like, trying to be hyper vigilant about like my schedule and everything. And so I'm wondering when, or if graduation and all those things, which I'm sure they are, like when they are and stuff like that, so, and like the parade and.
I can put that in the update.
Okay, thanks. That'd be awesome.
Perfect. Anything else? Any other board topics? All right, then we will adjourn the meeting at 7:35.